Hey everybody, okay, I'm in North Harvey today on Monday's planes. So the rains kinda stopped, it's still kinda drizzly, but I am campaigning for 152 school board. Uh, early voting is going on now, election day is the first and I'm excited because I saw that they rehabbed this house on this plane. It's a really big house and I've been wanting to stop by. So let's see if anybody answers. We shall see. We shall see, we shall see. Um, again, this is kind of, uh, oh hey Carlita, this is kinda the area. Somewhere around here is where the mayor Haines lived. So we are on this plane, this plane, 14600 block of this plane. It's a really pretty houses here. Okay, I don't think anybody's answering, that's okay, but I'll show you guys. As I back up, you might have seen this one online, this was, this was a large home. That um, was redone recently. So it's, it's pretty cool, I forgot what it sold for, but I mean, I remember the list price was pretty high. It's in the corner of 146 and um, and this plane is really very, very pretty. So yeah, I don't know who ended up buying it, but um. So yes, we are in North Harvey, we are near the um. We're near uh, what do you call it, the Little Calumet River, just sort of, just south of the Little Calumet. Oh. Hello? No one's there? Oh, okay. I'm just running for school board. So yeah, you got Little Calumet, it's kind of a nice corner, you got Little Calumet, you have the train, and you have Halsted and Sibley. So it's like a quiet little corner, but I, are you guys voters in Harvey? Are you voters in Harvey? Oh, okay, I, my name's Ryan, I'm running for 152 school board, so I would appreciate your votes. Um, my biggest concern is just making sure that our money is being spent on the kids and not wasted. I don't know if you heard uh, the chicken wing scandal, but that's this board. You what? Yeah, yeah, exactly. So there was one lady that was sent to jail for it, but no one on the board to this day has taken account of uh, responsibility for it. So that among a lot of other issues, like we, we just really need to know what they're doing. So that's my big motivation to run, uh, because as you know, if we want good people coming to Harvey, the first thing they look for are the schools. So yeah, you guys have kids in the schools at all?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
One just had a half cap uh, yesterday.
Oh, okay, I saw someone post that, that was uh, in the auditorium at Thornton. Okay, oh, very nice, very nice. Do you have uh, kids? No, oh, okay, okay, yeah. So yeah, no, I appreciate your support and um, how, have you guys been here long in Harvey? Okay. Okay, good for you. Really? Oh, okay, oh, awesome, okay. Yeah, I was from the area and then moved away, lived a few different places and then came back. I do the Harvey Historical Society as well, so you can find me, uh, you can find, just by my name on Facebook and then you can also find the Harvey Historical Society group. And then I just started another Facebook group called Chicago Southland Politics, so trying to get people to come out. So if you ever wanna come to meetings, you can come to school board meetings, you can come to city council meetings, you can come to uh, well, I haven't been to one of the park district meetings. But the city council ones are usually the ones that have the best attendance, so I've been to tons of those, but we, we always, I'd love to see you and tell your neighbors. Cause remember, the politicians work for you. Right, exact, yes, and you're not alone. Absolutely, you're not alone to feel that way. And you should come, because I'll tell you what, your alderman is happy to brag at these meetings and he's head of the finance committee. And he says that his ward looks great and he says that everything's perfect and he's the best alderman ever. So if you don't agree with that especially, I definitely encourage you to come to the meetings. Exactly, exactly, or like they, I had posted some videos online because they just redid 154th. And they, you know, 154th didn't even need to be done. And I was like, wait, we have streets that are like, you can barely drive down them, why don't you redo that street? Right, in touch of beauty, the hair store that's been there forever, now they said they're closing. Because it was closed, the street was closed for so long. So I'm like. But yeah, if you can come out, always happy to see you. Okay. Alrighty, and then if you have social media, that's usually, like I said, I'm always on Facebook posting things or Instagram or TikTok, so. And what, what's your name? J C Brian, nice to meet you, nice to meet you, okay. See you guys. Alright. So that's nice, uh. Annette, Bernard, Diane, George, hello, hello. So again, if you just joined, I am out passing my stuff out here campaigning for 152 school board. It's always nice to talk to people and if you have tuned in before, you'll notice that people here in Harvey. I'll give you a glance again of where I'm at, so this is where the one, that's that new house that just sold, that was totally redone, that's a big house too. Hi, yeah, I'm just running for school board, I just wanted to hand out my information.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Ryan.
Okay.
So uh, my main concern is just making sure that your tax dollars are actually going towards the kids and not being wasted. Because this is the same district or the same board that have a chicken wing scandal and other scandals. So you remember, okay, okay. Right, and then the alde, actually your alderman, uh, he was sued a few years ago, well, the district was sued because he physically threatened a superintendent. That was asking for a forensic audit and according to her, he called and said, you're due for an ass whooping or ass kicking or something. So she sued, um, that's um, uh, Rogers. Yeah, so he's not on that board anymore, but he is the alderman, but we as taxpayers, we paid that superintendent $400,000 because he threatened her. So that's, that's the stuff that I'm like, we, we need to do better, you know? Right, right, exactly, so, and if you know, yes, I would say if you know of anyone that wants to run or support people that are running, uh, we have city elections coming up too in about 16 months, so. So, what's, what's your name? Thomas, Ryan, nice to meet you, and if you ever wanna contact me, I'm, you can look up my name, I'm, uh, I do the Harvey Historical Society. So I have my personal profile, I have the Historical Society page, I have Chicago Southland Politics on Facebook. So anytime, if you have any questions or concerns, even if I don't have the answer, I will try to help. Okay, thank you, okay, have a good day. Now I go to this next cute little house, aw, it's a little, cute little baby white house. That was a nice brick one too, I'll tell you, it's so nice to see when you have these solid brick homes, you know? And we have our lovely porches too, I mean, they just don't make houses like this anymore, you know, they're so adorable. Okay, no answer here. No one may be home. Okay. And as that gentleman was saying, you know, there's just, there's a lot of corruption, there are a lot of issues, um, at every level of politics here. We have, we have problems with politicians not responding, so it is. It's definitely a challenge to say the least. Um, but as you see, people are not shy to tell you about it or talk about it. Which is great, you know, I mean, I am just here to try to be real and, yeah, so. They're not like huge houses or anything. Around here, but I, I like it in that it's a quiet little corner of Harvey that many people do not realize it's even Harvey. There were also a few other well-known residents that lived on Calumet Boulevard, which is just like a block, uh, or two blocks north. I can't remember their names off the top of my head, but I know I've been told about them by some others. And I think, well, no, I guess, I was gonna say, was this always Brian's district here? If this is always Brian, or if it was uh. Or if this was ever a part of Sandberg, but Sandberg, because we have not maintained our properties over the years, a big um, you know, issue is that. Hi, yeah, I'm just running for school board, I just wanted to give my information, I don't know if you. Oh, okay, thank you. Um, so I don't know if uh. Oh, yeah, yeah, I was wondering if people here still work tax services, I don't know if anybody actually lives there though, can't tell. I don't know if anybody here um, knows if these kids ever went to Sandberg, well, I'm guessing no, probably. On the west side of Halsted, only maybe went to Sandberg, but you know, because of, of not taking care of the different homes. As we should have, that's one of the main reasons why our schools are so depopulated and so Sandberg isn't even used. They demolished the beautiful historic um, Lowell Longfellow a few years ago, which I was very sad to see. But yeah. Oh, this one has a nice big porch too, this is a 60s era house. Okay. No answer, but I can see some other people have been here and left their visitor, so I'll leave mine. And then, we have to figure out where else we can go in Harvey today. But yeah, this is the kind of stuff that when you have citywide corruption on these different boards, you see, so this property burnt out. Um, I'm told that. There were some politicians, uh, and some of their connected people that I think it was just a few years ago, but they were having parties in this building. Uh, selling illegal alcohol and all the things that they shouldn't have been doing. Unfortunately, that is, that burned as well, so who knows why that burned. You have this business here, there's a whole bunch of junk there next door, but yeah, this, this is this planes and Sibley. I wonder what used to be on that empty corner over there, and those are some 60s era, um, they're pretty well maintained, they, they look decent from here. Uh, but those are some 60s era apartment buildings that were built. Also, dab must have been a business right next to the apartment buildings, I wonder what that used to be. I see marks on mark right now. Also, if anybody wants to join me on here. I have never used the function where I invited someone, oh wait, no, I think I did one time, I think it was on audio that I invited someone. But where do you guys think I should go in Harvey next? I'm thinking, part of me is thinking to cover 155th, but, and maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like people there already kinda know who I am, just because it's right close to my house. Still got some daylight left, it's just a little before seven. Unfortunately, the sun is not out today, cause it's raining. It's icky and rainy, but the temperature is nice at least, so that's good. So um, I think what we'll, what I'll do is go to. The other side of Halsted. And maybe hit up Green or, oh, I forgot the street, wait, did I get this one? That was uh, oh, that's the one way too, I forgot about that. Maybe I should hit that one up. I think it's Union, right? I'm like, what's, what's the street right next to Halsted, I think it's Union. I really would love to get one of those like, like some kind of holder, where maybe I could. I don't, I don't know, there must be something out there, you know, where you could put your camera attached it um. And people could see where you're driving. There was one of the abandoned apartment buildings, and there's a liquor store, then there's the old finish line car wash. Okay, so I'm gonna turn on 146th and we'll go back around, cause I forgot about this block. Okay, there's a cute little, little park, a little baby park, not too many houses on that street, it's called Union Park. Uh, but let's see, oh yeah, and we got, got some places, they've got some signs up too, let's give it a whirl, why not? Why not, right? As long as we're here, let's give it a whirl and I'll show you guys. Show you guys a little bit more of North Harvey. Okay, so. You can see the good, the bad, and the ugly, right? They locked us. So I am now at. 146th and Union, there's a little park there, Union Park, it doesn't look too bad actually. Um, I'm just thinking, you know, the general cleanliness. Uh, there's those ubiquitous 60s apartment buildings that were added in, you know, 50s and 60s. That is kind of a cool looking blue house, I'm definitely gonna stop there, but this is another concern of mine, um. Fires, look at this, 146th and Union, and then there's Halsted right there, but look, there's another building that burned. We have so many fires that happen all the time in Harvey and we don't know really where or, I mean, we, we don't know why. Or, you know, who's starting them, the fire department, the police department, they, they don't provide us any information. They don't even notify us about the fires, you know, we have to find out from other people, other neighbors or something. And I get concerned because, I mean, if you have continuous fires all year, or you know. So, so often like that, I'm, I'm wondering, well, you know, could this be the work of an arsonist and we just don't know. And unfortunately, we don't get, um. We don't really get any information from the city, so. Yeah, it's not good, it's not good. Okay, so this person is not home either, not that I know of, we'll just slap that right there. So that house looks empty, oh, two houses in a row look empty. Oh, I love the green awning, see, that's a shame, I wonder if it's city-owned property, this one looks kinda empty. This one, I don't know, doesn't. Doors left, I, I don't know, it's hard to tell, I don't know if anybody lives there. Okay, now this one looks decently maintained. And there's a light on, so I think we can stop here. And then the other side of the street, it looks like has more houses. Oh, I think I've seen that one for sale before in the MLS, that is a cool little, little house right there. Oh, okay, I guess this is blocked, so we cannot stop in there, oh well. Let's see, this one maybe, or this one, let us know. Looks like this one's been updated, it's got some new railings, new concrete steps. It's got a sign for Hawkins and Gardner, two other folks running for 152. And the Amazon guy is popular here, he's dropping off a lot of packages. Hey Diane, I'm gonna leave something though, at least in the mailbox, cause I think it looks like someone lives here. I like their little rock thing that they made, it's kinda pretty. Diane, I'm in North Harvey again, I'm on 14600 block of Union. This actually looks like it might be an apartment building, but I do, does seem like somebody's home. So let's see, let's see if they answer the door. Nice, they're growing some, some, some plants, look at, nice. Oh, hi, yeah, my name is Ryan, I'm running for 152 school board, uh, most of your tax money goes to the schools, so. Oh, hi, I was just leaving a message, um, I'm running for school board, I just wanted to introduce myself, my name is Ryan. So I'm running for 152 school board, most of your tax money goes to this school district. So my big concern is just making sure that the money is actually going to help the kids. So, um, but if you, if you ever have any questions about anything in Harvey, I also do the Harvey Historical Society, so we have a Facebook group. You can find that, my name on Facebook. Oh, what's your name?
I'm pretty sure I am.
Okay, cool, cool. Yes, yeah, and we've tried to do so many things over the past year or two, but it's just like the, the mayor and his allies, like they fight. Every little thing, and some people complain in the group and they're like, well, I didn't come here for this. This is too political, and I'm like, yeah, but. Well, I said, but how can, I said, how can we not do politics, cause I can't even save one brick without the politicians going, no. I mean, it's just sad, but that's why I saw the opening for school board and I was like, oh, that's the chicken wing scandal district. So I, you know, that's just my goal, like I can't, I can't change things overnight, but I'm willing to help, at least find out where the money's going. So, but nice to meet you in person, so feel free, like I said, even if it's whatever, if you need help or if you have a question, I also do real estate. But you can always mess, even if I don't have the answer, I can try to find it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, alright, bye bye. That's nice. So see ya, Diane, she already, uh, she already knew our group. All my Harvey Historical Societyites, the fans, so she knew us already. Oh, this is sad though, see, this house looks like, although I, I don't know if someone lives there, but definitely needs some TLC. And here's another building that is just abandoned, that could house, you know, lots of families. Um, I don't know if anybody watching knows what used to be here at 146th and Union, you had the restaurant that burned not that long ago with a bar. But next to the gas station here, there's an empty lot here and another empty lot there. Um, yeah, so I wonder, wonder what used to be there. If you know, feel free to tell us, this beauty, I don't know if anybody bought it. I'm not sure, there's a car parked there, so maybe there's some, oh no, there's some license, maybe I'll knock on the door. But this was for sale a while ago, I remember it needed work, but I love these old houses, look at that, we're flying, isn't that cool? I was gonna say it's a scooter revival, but that's not what it's called. But I love the decorative stone and the door, the uniquely shaped door, isn't that good? I'm such a, I'm such a nerd for that stuff. But I'm not, I'm not exactly sure if somebody lives there, and there's also no mail, oh no, there is a mailbox, oh, okay, okay, okay. I guess I could stick it. Maybe they don't use that door, I'll stick it right here. What the heck, you know, I paid for the cards already, right? No, that may have blown away, oh, hi. Yeah, I'm just running for school board, I was just gonna leave you my card, so. And I also do the Harvey Historical Society, I love this old house.
Alright.
Did you buy it recently?
Yeah, I'm buying like this, but I'm gonna repair there, something like this is the door and the front and little, little, little repair.
Cause I, yeah.
About a couple of years.
I was gonna say, cause I also do real estate, I'm a Realtor, I do the Harvey Historical Society, but I do remember seeing it for sale a few years ago. So I always wondered, I was like, oh, I wonder if anyone bought that, so I'm glad because I love to see the old houses saved and fixed and. So that's, I'm so glad, that's, that's wonderful, but yeah, I'm, I'm, my name's Ryan, um, if you have Facebook, I'm on Facebook. We have the Harvey Historical Society on Facebook and I also do the Chicago Southland Politics group, so. But basically, I'm running for school board just cause I wanna make sure that our money is going to help the kids and that they're not wasting it. So um, I don't know if you have kids in the district or uh.
Okay.
But even if you don't have kids, most of your property tax money goes to this school district.
Alright.
So, you know, just trying to make sure that, that. Things are running the way they should be, so. But yeah, no, nice to meet you, what's your name?
Marcos.
Marcos, okay, and you said you do construction?
Yeah, I'm, no, I'm working in the welding.
Welding, okay, oh, cause I need my front, I have uh, I have two um, wrought iron railings in the front of my house, I need them. Um, probably reattached at some point, do you, do you do that for people? Okay, do you have a card or something?
No, I only recommend it for work, I, I'm working for the people recommended.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like this, a couple of years, it's not, not making a uh, car for the, something the people. Calling for the car and hey, what happened, oh, you bring it for, give me estimate, oh, yeah, and you go into the estimate and it start the work and don't pay. Something the people already did, so, so right now I'm working for recommending people, so I make it one work for different people. And these people are recommended the other one, and this is, is for, for more, more uh, security.
Right, so that's keeping you busy, occupiedo? Well, I was gonna say, yeah, because if you wanna give me an estimate, I would be happy to take your number.
Yeah, take my number, 773.
Sure, give me. Thank you, appreciate it. I, I might just text you some pictures even, you know? Yeah, cause it's, it shouldn't be something, anything hard, but it's just like, oh yeah, I should probably, you know, do something eventually. Well, thank you, nice to meet you, alright, have a good evening. Oh, that's nice, I love to see that, so somebody bought this old house, you guys, look at, yay. He said he's a welder and he's fixing it up, hi Terry. And Diane Boswell joined too, so this is the house, it's on 147th and basically, and um. Uh, Union, and I saw it for sale a few years ago and I was like, oh, I wish I could buy that and restore it, so. Then my next wish list is, you know, hopefully he is actually restoring and not just, oop. Should I try, who doesn't learn people to repair? Oh, I try to, to encourage people to restore these things and not um. To restore and not renovate, you don't wanna renovate the old homes, that, the ren, when you say renovate, that means, has a connotation of um. Tearing out the old stuff and replacing it with new stuff, which um, I would say for the vast majority of the time, the newer materials are. Not better, they are usually superiorly inferior. Uh, oh, look at the kitty, oh kitties, hi kitties, how you doing kitties? I always feel awkward when there's no doorbell though. But yeah, ideally we want people to, to restore, so in other words, that means instead of getting rid of plaster walls and putting in drywall. Drywall is cheaper and, and in inferior material, you want, we wanna repair the plaster. Instead of getting rid of the, instead of getting rid of the, your wood windows and replacing them with cheap plastic windows, cause that's all vinyl is. You know, we repair the wood windows because as you will. You, you might know, actually you might not know, but they make these, the newer products, they're, it's called planned obsolescence, so they make them. They make them intending them to go bad, so like when you buy these cheap plastic windows, they want you to buy new ones in, you know, 10 to 20 years. Knock hard, thank you. Versus if you restore your wood windows, uh, I'm trying to think if I, any of the houses here have wood windows, but I don't see any. Yeah, but they'll last forever, so hi, yeah, I'm just running for school board, I, my name's Ryan, I just wanted to introduce myself.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Yeah. So I'm, this is for the elementary school board. So I'm, this is for the elementary school board. Uh, early voting is going on and then voting, uh, official election day is April 1st.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you have kids in the districts, but, oh you do, okay. So my number one concern is just making sure they're spending our money actually on the kids. This is the district that had the chicken wing scandal. And we still don't really know where that money went. Um, and there's just been, there've been too many scandals, particularly with the money. So you know, that's where most of your tax dollars go is the school district, so. Yeah. And then if you ever have any questions or any issues uh, related to Harvey or whatever, you know, I'll try to find the answer for you if I can. I do the Harvey Historical Society, so you can find our group on Facebook. You can find, you know, my name on Facebook. And then I also do the Chicago South End Politics Group.
Okay.
So, okay. Alright, have a good one. Oh yeah? Do you guys have a lot of problems on this block or how is it?
Everywhere.
Oh, really? I, I mean, I always watch my surroundings, but you know, honestly, I'm a Realtor too. And I, like I go everywhere, like I've sold in Inglewood, Rosen, you know, so I kinda, I'm kinda used to just, I just go anywhere. But I know what you mean. Yes, I agree. I always tell people that too. Beware of your surroundings. Right, I, I agree with that. Thank you. That's nice. She's concerned about my safety. See, people are so nice. She said, don't be out here too dark. Cause you never know. And see, it doesn't help, like look, empty house, empty house. I mean, look, we have tax, what about the taxpayers and the people that, look, these two houses look great. They don't wanna deal with the BS of having these horrible empty houses around and empty lot, look in a burnt out building. You know, it's just, our politicians are not doing their jobs, okay? And I hear what she's saying, but I, I really don't intend on being out here too late. But this is a great way to get my face out there, right? And here's my card. I'll show everybody my cards again. Get my face out there. Meet some people. There's no substitute for meeting people in your community. Even if it's just a short hello. I love that blue house next door. But look at that. No one should have to look at that burnt out mess. It's horrible. Hi. Hi, yeah, I'm just running for school board. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Ryan. And I don't know if you have any kids in the districts, but uh, even if you don't, most of your tax money goes to this school district. So a big, big portion of your tax bill. So I just wanna make sure that our money is being spent well and on the kids and not on like the chicken wing scandal and some of the other things. And if you heard about that? So they stole, um, this was just a few years ago, someone stole a million and a half dollars worth of chicken wings from the school district. And no one on the board to this day has claimed responsibility. So just things like that where it's like, what are you guys doing? You know? So um, but yeah, so I appreciate your vote. And if you have any questions or anything I can help with at all, you can find me under my name on Facebook. And then I also, I'm a Realtor. I do the Harvey Historical Society, so that's on Facebook. And um, yeah, yeah, feel free to, to reach out.
Okay, thank you.
What's, what's your name?
Marquesha.
Okay, Marquesha, nice to meet you.
You too.
You're doing your exercising? Okay, good for you. That's what I need to do, okay? When did this fire happen, by the way?
Uh, like a couple of weeks ago.
It was recent? Cause see, I'm trying to document this stuff and I go to city council meetings all the time, which I encourage you and all your neighbors, please come to city council meetings, speak up. The politicians serve you, not the other way around, right? But that's one of the things I brought up is I said, you know, we have fires all the time. And when I talk to the police and fire, they never talk about investigating them. They nev, they never even tell us. Like I didn't even know that there was a fire there.
Yeah, that was like a couple of weeks ago.
Wow.
It was during the night.
See, and I said, I said at the last city council meeting, I, I said, you know, it's very possible that we have arsonists or multi, you know, or there's some, some reason these fires are happening.
Yeah.
But they never tell, like when you complain or when I've asked her, I was like, oh, it's just squatters. I'm like, all the time?
I'm not really sure, but I know they was like cleaning like debris out of there since the fire though.
Okay, well, that's good at least.
Anything that was like flammable. Yeah, they kind of cleaned it out. Cause it's, it's been like vacant for like years now.
I know, and see, that's not right. I've been complaining about that for years. And then same thing with these um, empty houses, like has the city or your alderman done anything about these?
No.
Have you, have you spoken with um, Tyrone Rogers? Has he, does he respond?
We um, I mean, we live here for years and we've made our complaints, so we pretty much just let them do what they need to do.
That's what I figured, okay.
Yeah.
Cause he, yeah, he hasn't, whenever we've asked him for things, he's never responded either, but I just thought I would ask, okay. Well, city elections will be coming up in about 16 months, so. I, I, we need some fresh people in there too.
Okay, thank you.
Cause you deserve better. Like you shouldn't have to look at this. You know what I mean?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Nice to meet you. Yeah, it's, it's sad. So I found out, I'm gonna show you guys this again. So this building right here at 146th and Union, the young lady said that this just had a fire. Just had a fire. I mean, that's crazy. I hope that they use the store by going up the right way. Um, it just had a fire a few weeks ago, she said. So I mean, we never get any answers for this stuff. Uh, hey, oh Cheryl, Cheryl and Cindy. Hey Cindy. I know Cindy's running for a stager position. It's the last few days before election day here. I, I wonder, like, I don't know if the house was, is cinderbox, but I, I, I love the color blue that they've done it with. It's real kinda different. I don't know if anybody's home. I'll leave one of my cards. Hopefully it won't fall. Yes, that will fall. Okay, where would I put it? Right here? Okay, right there, there we go. But yeah, look at, look at the blue. Isn't that kinda cool? It's like, it's painted blue and white like that, so I don't know. It's that, I don't know if it's actual cinderbox or if it's some kind of stucco that they just painted a design on or what, but. And we are done, at least with this block. I mean, I guess I could go up to 140. Hello Sandra, I could go up another block or two on Union, but there's not. That block looks kinda decimated unfortunately. But boy, let me tell you, going, there's nothing like going door to door to learn about your community. Let me tell you that. Wow. And look at, a nice young resident there. She said that she, she maintains her home very well. It looks pretty, pretty little brick home there. And uh, she said that that fire, that's her house, that fire just happened a few weeks ago and they haven't gotten any answers from anybody. And she said, uh, that includes um, the alderman, Tyrone Rogers. I mean, what do we? My question is, what are we even paying these people for? If they can't even investigate all the, the fires that happened in Harvey? We don't get answers for that? I mean, we don't get answers for what they're doing with all the empty properties? It's just, it's crazy, you know? Oops, we deserve better people. Oh yeah, and there's this, this is like that, I feel like it's a famous car wash now. That's vacant, see? I wonder when that was open last? God, I'm guessing like what, early 90s? I mean, uh, late 90s maybe? Nick Graves years? But yeah, I'll take, I'll, I'm gonna swing back around. We'll take uh, one more look at Union and see if there are any houses where. Are we worth stopping by or not? Let's see, oops. Gotta make sure I don't miss my turn. Okay. You gotta turn on Calumet Boulevard. And like I said, a lot of people don't know that this is still Harvey. It's right by Riverdale. But indeed it is Harvey. I love Calumet Boulevard though. It's pretty, it's a pretty area. And Calumet Park is here. Alright, here we go. Yeah, I just wanted to see if there were enough houses to testify walking down the street. Oh, there's one. Two, three, okay. Wow, this road is bad though. This road is in bad shape. Very bad shape. Okay, actually, so this block does have a fair number of, of homes. Maybe I'll do this one before I head in. I also wanted to go to East Harvey, but maybe I'll stop by East Harvey tomorrow. Otherwise, is that where I was at before? Oh yeah, that block. The next block that I was thinking of, like that one is definitely not, um. See this one here? That block doesn't, it doesn't really have many occupied houses at all unfortunately. So probably this block would be a better use of time. I mean, I just really feel for people, can you imagine paying all the property taxes that you pay? And you have to, you still have to look at you have to look at all these um you have to look at all these dilapidated empty homes. It's just, it's not right. However, I will say the temperature is very pleasant right now, so I'm, I'm, I'm happy about that. Okay. Oop, oop. Actually, this is, this is in decent, decent shape. Let's see if anybody answers, huh? Yeah, and then this will probably be it for me. If you're just joining us again, I um, I'm in North Harvey, I'm on Union. This block is maintained pretty well though. It looks good. Oh man, okay, that's not gonna work. That didn't stay. How do I leave it? Okay, I think that'll work good. I'll show you guys this block. Yeah, see? It looks like it's pretty well maintained actually. So we're right by Calumet Boulevard, but we're still on Union. I love when they have the matching lights. It looks so cute. I don't think anyone's home here, but let's try to try. Oh, I wonder what, it's like an old button of some sort. Oh, I don't know what that is. It's interesting. Oh, I hear a puppy across the street. Puppies, puppies. Okay, no answer. Alright, leave my card and go. Hello? If you're a voter, I'm running for school board. I was just gonna give you my information. Are you registered in Harvey? Oh, okay. Yeah, I would appreciate your vote. I'm Ryan. I'm running for 152 school board.
Okay.
So my number one thing is just trying to make sure that our money is being spent on the kids and not wasted. So I appreciate your vote. Thank you. Wha, what's your name? Okay, nice to meet you. Thank you too. Alright, I'll leave the card and on we go. And then this is what I don't like. Look, this is what's infuriating. So you have these lovely houses here. And then you have this. Like what in the hell? And who wants to live next to this? You know? And these homes look like picturesque, like they're maintained so well. So it's just, no one wants to deal with that. We deserve better. And I hope you guys are all, um, oh, that's cute. Look at the little, little bay window they put in there. That's cute. I hope wherever you guys live, if you're not in Harvey, that you're still voting and participating and being good model citizens. Okay, I don't know if anybody's home here. And since I'm kinda running for my cards, I'm not gonna give everybody their card. I guess I should order more. I kinda didn't expect to to use up as many cards as I did, you know? But yeah, look, see, the outside of the street looks really cute too, very well maintained. Now look, people that maintain their properties and then you have this mess. Horrible, horrible, horrible. We'll stop by here because we have a nice light on. Seems very welcome here. Hopefully it's not getting too late around, people are like, who is it? There's somebody talking somewhere. See, that looks nice behind me. Definitely one thing I've learned through all this is that there are people there are people in Harvey who care. And uh, just because so much of the city is, is, is mis, um, you know, mishandled, misgoverned. Uh, because, really because of the lack of oversight, that doesn't mean that you don't have a lot of people here who care. Cause you do. We really do. Oops, did I ring it? I don't know if I did the right thing, but that guy's house, that is so pretty on the corner. Very pretty. Hi. Hi, yeah, I'm just running for Harvey 152 school board. I just wanted to introduce myself and I don't know if you, are you guys registered voters? Are you guys registered voters?
Yeah, we're registered.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I remember you from the.
Appreciate your vote.
I remember you from the meeting.
Oh, did, did, did you go to one of the city council meetings?
Yeah, I was the CPR instructor guy.
Oh, okay. Oh, wonderful. Okay, great. Yeah, yeah. So I'm running for 152 school board. My main concern is just trying to make sure that they're spending the money correctly. This is the same district that was, had the chicken wing scandal and no one on the board has, has taken accountability for that. And there's just, there's a lot of other stuff that just needs to be, you know, we need to make sure the money is being spent on the kids and not on silly things, so.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, yeah, but what was your name?
Eris.
Okay, Eris. Okay. Nice to see you again. Alright, appreciate it. I was gonna say, I love this area. This is such a quiet little area of Harvey. I love coming. This is the, I've come over here a few times. I like near Calumet Boulevard and everything. It's nice.
Yeah, it's really quiet over here. We need, we need the street fixed.
I saw that. I was gonna say, how do you like Tyrone Rogers? Because I was looking and I'm like, oh man, you guys take care of your houses really well. And then you have this empty house and another empty house and potholes in the street. I'm like, if I were you, you all over here, I would be not happy with him because.
Not, not really, but you know, what can we do?
Municipal elections are in about 16 months, so keep that in mind.
Yeah, but you know, most everybody that, that, that runs are, you know, um.
Not good.
Uh, well, I was gonna say uh, circular or reciprocal.
It's a lot of the same people. Well, you know, Melville ran, I think he's. It's a lot of the same people, well, you know, Melville ran, I think he's run twice, um, last time he was very close to winning against, do you know Melville King?
No.
He's the minister, um, so he, he's run against Tyrone for this ward twice, I'm guessing he probably will run again, but he seems nice, he's spoken at city council meetings, he's a minister, he's a Vietnam vet.
Alright, yeah, cause most, most everybody is reciprocal, you know, you, you hire one person, this is, you know, it's like a clone of the, of the original person.
Right, I know, that's why we need new people. And definitely tell, come out to city council meetings, encourage, you know, your neighbors' friends come out, cause the politicians work for you, you do not work for them. They don't want you to know that, but I always remind people.
Yeah, we know.
So, good, okay, awesome, well hopefully I'll see you at one of the meetings. Oh, and then I do, also do the Harvey Historical Society, so you can find, like, find it under my name, or you can find the group on Facebook. So I have that, and then I just started Chicago Southland Politics, um, Facebook group as well. Just trying to get people involved, so.
Yeah, I understand.
We need some fresh faces on these boards, so maybe you should, maybe you could run.
Uh, I'm, uh, only thing I really wanna do is get my, uh, CPR courses started.
Oh, okay.
It's a community-based type thing, you know?
Yeah, have you, have you talked to the Harvey Park District?
Yeah, that's what I was there for.
Okay, good, good, good.
My proposal, my business proposal.
Okay, good, so I was gonna say, no, the Park District would be good, the city had, under Clark, has been, the past six years has been very tough to work with. Uh, he, they do let people work with them, but I feel like it's like you have to pay them money or something under the table.
Everybody wants money.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not right, so. Well, good, we'll keep it up and, um, I hope to, to see you out.
Alright.
Okay. Have a good one. That's nice, okay, I do kind of remember him, but, uh, I don't remember exactly. So CPR, huh, he was proposing his CPR, I can't remember what year that was at. Oh my god, I love this corner house, I love it. And I still stopped by while I'm here. That one kinda, oh, no, I think, I guess people do live in that one, but it doesn't look like the lights are on. Oh, hey, Robert. Hey, hey, Robert, I am, oh, I was gonna say, I'm in your ward, no, I'm not in your ward. I'm at Union and Calumet Boulevard. Calumet Boulevard is definitely one of our better-kept secrets as far as streets go in Harvey, it's so cute, it's right on the river, you can have a riverfront property. You've got your sixties raised ranches, but we also have some nice older homes there. And whoever lives here has a beautiful corner lot that they maintain very well. So we'll see if they answer, I did see them outside just a little bit ago. Oh, and look at, wait, how did they get? They got a speed bump. Huh, see, it's the process by which they do those things, not that I'm a big fan of, I don't mind speed humps as much, the big speed bumps I don't like the damage, but. Hi! Yeah, I'm running for 152 Harvey School Board, I just wanted to introduce myself.
Say that again.
I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm running for 152 Harvey School Board, my name is Ryan. So I don't know if you, are you a, a registered voter for Harvey?
Am I voting for Harvey?
Oh, I, well, just wanted to know if you're a registered voter here?
I, I'm not understanding you.
Uh, cause I'm, I'm running, I'm introducing myself, I'm running for school board, yeah.
What are you running for?
For District 152 School Board. Yeah, so my name is Ryan, I do the Harvey Historical Society, and, um, I'm also a Realtor, but yeah, I'm, I'm running for the school board. Mostly, my biggest concern is because there have been a lot of scandals as far as how they've handled the money, and I want to see where the tax money is actually going.
Okay.
Cause most of your tax bill goes to our schools. So, yeah, so I just wanted to introduce myself and, you know, I don't know if you voted already, but, um, but yeah, so that's, that's me, if you want my information.
Okay, okay.
And I love your house, I was gonna say, I like this area by the river, it's a nice little quiet corner of Harvey.
Well, it keeps you busy, I tell you that.
Oh, having the corner lot?
Absolutely.
Yeah. No, it's beautiful, yeah, years ago, my cousin, well, it's his, his wife's parents, they had a, they had a house on the river. But I forget which one, but they said it was kind of like a Japanese style. It was very nice. So I, I, I noticed a lot of them are still kept up very well.
Yeah, uh, when, when when I'm, I moved in here actually about the same time all the rest of the, uh, 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 all them houses over there moved in here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I, and I tried to keep it clean, and I got up this morning and went over there, see, I bought that house next door for my grandson.
Oh, the one with the yellow light on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
For my grandson.
Okay.
Got up this morning, went over there, picked up all the papers and stuff around here.
Oh, yes. I get that too, that like a trash blows all the time. Well, I have to say, it looks fantastic.
Okay.
So I, I am very pleased to see that, I love when people show pride in-
I'm gonna try to make it look better, but I'm so goddamn mad at this guy running, they're supposed to be the mayor. And he started building something back two years ago. He ain't done a damn thing.
Oh, um, Chris Clark, you mean?
On their corner.
Our mayor, Chris Clark? Our, the Harvey mayor, Christopher Clark? Is that, are, are, you're talking about the Harvey mayor, Christopher Clark, our mayor?
I guess so.
Oh, okay.
I guess so, but, but, over, over on, uh, what's the name of this, over on Housit? And then next street over there, he hasn't done a damn thing, and it'd been about three, two years before, before he tried to do anything.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, cause I know this is Tyrone Rogers ward here. So how do you like, has, has he been responsive, or how, how are, are you happy with, um, you know, how he's, does he help people out here?
No, he don't help do the damn thing.
Okay.
He don't help do the damn thing.
Yeah.
Well, let me go, I'm, I'm, got something in there on the stove.
I understand, I won't keep you.
Back by sometime, we talk and-
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much, have a great evening. That is so sweet, I love meeting people. And see, he takes care of his property, he said this other one is his is his grandson. I mean, that is what it is all about. And he is just beautiful, you can tell he really takes pride in his house, I'll show you a little bit of the, the side here. Sorry, you couldn't, you know, as it's getting dark, you can't see as much of the yard, but he has a beautiful yard, a nice fence, nice garage here. So you know, that's, that's what we want, I mean, we want that in all of our communities, but it's so, so important. Should I go across the street? Oh, I guess I'll stop by there, he did say his grandson is there. Ah, let's do it. I'll make my final sprint here, as it's getting dark. Let's see if the grandson answers, it does look like someone's home. I don't even know, is this the right door to go to? I'm not sure of that actually. But that's, that's really nice, he got his grandson a house. And again, I don't know if I went to the right door, but but yeah, you can see across the street. And like I said, those lovely raised ranches. They're brick, they're not fancy, but they will last forever. You know what? I don't feel like fighting with that right now. We're gonna continue our way up here, work back towards the car. Ooh, it's kinda cool right now, like, it's kinda misty foggy. What do you think? I don't know if it comes out on the camera, but it looks kinda misty foggy, mysterious like. Now, this is, this is probably about two empty lots, I don't know if there used to be houses here or what, but nothing here right now. But yeah, on this side, they all look pretty good, pretty well maintained, I love these these griff houses, they can't beat them, they're solid. Okay. I don't think anyone is home, which is okay. We'll go on to the next one. That's nice, though, they have a, they have a nice sensor light. This is a pretty house too, but it looks dark, but you know, it rings the bell, you never know, maybe they're downstairs or something. Ooh. They have a nice sensor too, now that's kinda cool, like, see how that gives enough light, but the light's not that big, I like that idea. Oh, I like it. Oh, look, I have my I Voted sticker on too. So, don't forget to vote, people. Don't forget to vote, don't forget to vote. Okay. This one definitely has some lights on, looks like somebody's home. Yes, let's see if they answer. Don't wanna scare them, but. Yeah, this reminds me, like, I should get some sensor lights for my, for my, all my doors, that would be good. Hi! Hi, yeah, I'm just running for school board, I was just introducing myself. Hello? Yeah, I'm just running for 152 School Board, I was just introducing myself. Are you guys voters in Harvey?
Uh, no.
Oh, you're not registered?
No.
Okay, well, I do encourage you to get registered if possible, my name is Ryan, um, you can register on election day even.
You can just leave that in the, in the, in the box first.
Oh, okay, sure, sure, yeah, I'll leave it right here. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Well, you know, maybe they'll register, never know. Um, if those of you watching right now did not know that you can register to vote even on the, or up until the day of, uh, on the day of elections. So I'm thinking anybody that's home, is home here, but then again, like I said, they could be in a back room, right? So don't be afraid to vote. If you, even if you are not registered, you can register on the day of. You just have to bring certain, um, ID with you, I think it's two, two forms of ID. But if you Google Cook County Elections, it will tell you everything. So don't let anything stop you. Make sure let your voice be heard. Let your voice be heard. It's interesting, I've seen a few houses now where they have like a place for a doorbell, but it's gone, look at that, I love those cute little round lights, I know they're, they're not necessarily real fancy or anything, but I like when you have a whole bunch of houses that have them, it looks cute. Yeah, I, I don't know what's going on there, next. At least we got a few houses that are here, look at it, I love these cute little lights with the, and M with the lit, the lit up address too. Maybe I'll get that for my house at some point, it's super cute. Ooh, it's almost eight, oh shit, yeah. I should say, oh shoot, I apologize, I should, uh, be heading in soon, but at least it's a Saturday.
We can't answer the door right now, but if you'd like to, I have a message, you can do it now.
Hi, yeah, my name is Ryan, uh, I am running for 152 School Board, my main goal is just to figure out where your tax money is being spent and make sure it's not being wasted, that we're taking care of the kids first. Uh, you can find me on Facebook, I also do the Harvey Historical Society on Facebook, thank you, I'll leave my card for you. And that's cool, because at the last house, they had, um, okay, yeah, that one's definitely okay, see, here's another vacant house, like, oh, who wants to look at that? Ew, ew, ew. Yucky, yucky, yucky. Oh, this is the cool house that, it's almost like they have little streetlights. Oh, I see, I think they have, they have at least like two or three lots, that's cool. But yeah, I'm gonna, I gotta call it quits after this, otherwise I don't wanna make people angry going too late. That last house was cool in that they had wooden, they had the originals, the original wooden storm windows, which are really nice. Okay. Hi, I'm just running for school board, just wanted to introduce myself. I'll leave them a flyer. I think we're about done, folks. I think we're about done, maybe one more house that had a, I hear a puppy parkin' back there. Okay, two more houses. But I don't know if anybody is home. If anybody has any area that you want to suggest that I go to these last few days before the election, let me know. You know, I'm trying to make my rounds the best I can, it's just me running. Hi! Hi, yeah, I'm just running for school board, I just wanted to give you my information, introduce myself. Are you guys, are you guys registered voters in Harvey? Not sure, oh, okay, I'm just, I'm running for 152 School Board, so I just wanted to give you my information, but basically, most of your property taxes go to the schools, so my goal is just to make sure that they're spending our money mostly on the kids. Cause I don't know if you saw on the news, but this is the, the school district that had the chicken wing scandal?
Yeah.
Where they bought a ha- million and a half dollars worth of chicken wings?
Yeah.
And to this day, no one on the board has taken responsibility, they sent one lady to jail, and there's no way you can tell me that a million and a half dollars disappeared and only one lady knew about it and no one on the board, so that's just one of many things though, that I feel that they're hiding from us, so. Um, you can do early voting here, like, actual election day is April 1st. But early voting is at the Gloria Taylor Building, that's the closest, do you know where that is? It's right across from the stadium at Thornton.
Okay, okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so you can go there, and even if you're not registered to vote, if you, you just have to bring, I think, like, two forms of ID. It's not, it's really not that hard, but we, yes, please go out and vote, and there are other, there are also people running for other things as well.
You said April 1st, right?
Yes, that's actual election day, uh, but for any early voting, you can go to Gloria Taylor.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and then you, if you have any questions or issues, you can always find me on Facebook, my name, I do the Harvey Historical Society and Chicago Southland Politics, so. It's all, all on Facebook, so, what, what's your name?
Xavier.
What is it?
Xavier.
Xavier, okay, nice to meet you, yeah, do you have kids in the district?
Uh, yeah, my brother goes to Harvard.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, I see, I used to teach at Thornton, yes, I taught there for a little bit, but that's cool, okay. But yeah, no, I appreciate it, and then if you guys ever, you know, come out to any of the, like, city council meetings, well, probably city council meetings are the best place to like meet your neighbors and, cause they're, unfortunately, we have a lot of really, really bad politicians here. So we, we're trying to get rid of them, people like you could run, you could run for one of these positions, you know? Cause I'm telling you, a lot of these people, they've been on these boards for schools, parks, city, they've been on the boards for years and they just kinda don't care, you know?
Okay, yeah.
So, yeah. But yeah, like, thank you, likewise, like I said, if you have any questions or issues or whatever, you can always reach out.
Okay, you said Facebook, right?
Yes, do, do you know, does anybody live here?
This house?
Yeah.
Out on this house, but the one to the right, yeah.
Oh, okay, I did, I just left them a card, they didn't answer, but, okay, then I won't bother stopping at this one.
This house that, the white one, nobody lives there.
Okay.
But on the corner, where the Camaro is, where the gate is, there's some people living there.
Oh, there's another house, oh, okay, thank you, thank you so much. Oh, see, I, I already told me that, because I would not have known. There's a Camaro here, he says, and there's a house. Oh, I see, I see, I see, well, I don't know, what do you guys think? It's getting kinda close to time, that's weird, they stopped the sidewalk here, okay, it's not quite eaten top yet though. I guess I could try. You know, though, I'm not walking through this, this is like super wet. You know, though, I'm not walking through this, this is like, super wet. I know it's a short drive, but I'm gonna cheat and still do a little drive. But look, overall, this is such a nice pleasant block. So thank you, Union. Thank you, Union, by Calumet Boulevard. Let's go. Right around the corner, very quickly here, very quickly. Yeah, because, you know, I'm glad we get more daylight, but it is basically dark now. Oh, someone, someone has a truck parked here. Like, an actual truck, truck, oh boy, they could probably get in trouble for that. Last one. Because like I said, we don't wanna anger people here. And that's good. Well, I've covered, I think, just about everything. And uh, well, no, I still have houses that I did not get on Calumet Boulevard. And I think this is the front door, right? Is this their front door? Oh, my goodness, okay. And there's a cute kitty there, too. So here, just to give you an idea, this is Union and one hundred forty-sixth, I believe. Cute kitty. I should get a wind chime like that. Okay. I will leave them. A card. Good. Hi kitty, look at the cute kitty. Look here, such a cute kitty. Aw, they have a cute puppy out, too, oh my god, I didn't even notice. Yeah, they're probably like, who is knocking on our door at this time of night? But they didn't answer. Ooh, and now I am hot, let me tell you. It's quite warm, even though it wasn't very sunny today in general, but it's still pretty warm. Okay, guys, well, we're definitely getting toward the end, I only have a few of my cars left. So, again, I'm running for one fifty-two. But in general, get out and vote, people, vote, people. Because remember, we cannot change anything unless people act, you know? And don't just vote, like, hey, run for office, um, support people that are running for office, volunteer for their campaigns, you know, help, help out people like me, um, you can give money, you can uh go to meetings. Go to city meetings, or what, you know, whatever, uh, like, if it's a school board, go to a school board meeting, go to the library board, go to the parks meeting. Okay, this is Displanes, yeah. I was here the other day. But that's good, so we basically covered, basically covered all of Union and Displanes today. Here in North Harvey, so that's good. I will say, though, the street is in horrible, horrible shape. And I don't know what the rhyme or reason is for how they do uh, speed bumps or street repairs or any of those things. I, I don't, I don't know. Oh, and that's the nice gentleman that I spoke to, who was very complimentary. No one was mean, though, today, I, everybody was nice. I really haven't had too many mean people, just a few people that were, that are tell, were telling me, like, I don't vote. Which I'm like, oh, you should vote, like, at least try to make your voice heard. Now, I'm not saying, I understand, I do think that we at times, we have voter fraud and other issues going on, not saying the elections are always done fairly, but I mean, if you don't try, you don't get, right, so. Like I said, go to meetings, vote, help people campaign, donate to candidates, um, run yourself for something, but staying silent and doing nothing is not an option. You've got to speak up. Um, and we also see this with, with what's happening um at the national level, right? You know, local politics really affects your life the most, but even at the national level, uh, some people are, see what's happening and are not happy with this, with, with a lot of the stuff with Trump, but they don't necessarily wanna say anything because they're afraid. Unfortunately, we all can get afraid or be afraid at times, but that doesn't change anything, it doesn't help. When you have a bully, all they understand, um, oh, that's cute, oh, Sharon advertised on their, on their, their board there, that's nice. But all, all bullies understand is strength, so, um, I especially am working on our Spanish-speaking residents in Harvey to, you know, come to meetings and speak up, because you know, a lot of people who have been quiet over the years and thought that would protect them have had their businesses extorted by the city of Harvey. So I will remind people, whether it's on the national, state, or local level, silence will not protect you. It might keep you hidden for a while, but at some point, you're gonna have to find a way to fight for what's right, because the only real way to ensure your safety is to make sure that the people are in control, and it's not just rich, greedy politicians and corporations. I mean, that's really the only way to do it. So especially if you are, some of our, you know, Spanish speakers in Harvey, it's such, they represent, you represent such a, a large portion of our population now, more than a third. But it's rare that we'll see any Hispanic folks, like, for instance, at a city council meeting. That needs to change. Everybody needs to come. Just as, as we have a significant um Indian minority in Harvey, but I rarely see any of our Indian residents at the city council meetings, you know? Everyone needs to come. Um, oftentimes, it will be elderly people you'll see at the meetings. We, we also, we have to have young people, can't just be elderly. So, uh, basically, nothing will change until we come together as a community and we speak up and we start fighting for what we want. That is why Mayor Clark and more recently, District one forty-seven, and Dixmore Police and Harvey Police, that's why these people will try to, you know, have, have arrested me for speaking up, that's why they will try to intimidate me and you and others, that's why people get ticketed, um, but if you're quiet, unfortunately, that, that's not guaranteed to protect you. If you are quiet, especially if you are getting extorted by the city, getting tickets you shouldn't be getting and everything, and you don't fight it, that sends the message that you are an easy target. And whether it's Mayor Clark or one of the school boards or the police or whatever, they'll come back and hit you up again. So we, you know, we had businesses that the mayor closed them down, saying that they owed property taxes, even if they were renting and they didn't, they don't, they're not responsible for the property taxes. And then he said, oh, but if you pay us twenty-five hundred dollars a month, or I think it was twenty thousand a year, they had these payment plans, well, we'll let you reopen. Instead of fighting that, some people gave in, and you have to know, the city, the mayor, and his four aldermanic yes-men, as I call them, the alder yes-men, they're gonna come back and hit you up again, they don't care. They're gonna be like, oh, great, this guy's an easy target. This lady's an easy target, this business is an easy target. So I encourage people, again, if you know you're, you're doing things correctly and you're getting fees and tickets and other, other forms of harassment, you know, let's come together, you can always talk to me. Um, uh, you can reach out to Goldie Chapman, I mean, there, you're not alone. There are others that, that are fighting this stuff, and Harvey deserves better. I'm reminded that as I'm driving on one hundred fifty-fourth Street now, and knowing that it was repaved and didn't need to be repaved or redone at all, and so many of our downtown businesses suffered because of it, and I don't even know how they still are surviving, so, again, speak up, your voice matters, and we deserve better. Uh, thanks for joining me on my little campaign and tour of more of North Harvey, and see you guys soon, don't forget to vote.